Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the public hearing of the budget for proposed tax rate for 2017 and 2018. Would you please join us in the pledge? Hold up the silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please make standing for me, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, State Mayor of the Board, Superintendent, colleagues, and community members. We're today to discuss our budget and tax rate for 2017, 2018. This is a public hearing, and we're going to begin at the start. Okay, on our agenda today, we have the district goals, the legal requirements for budgets, the notice of public hearing, tax rate costs for quality of school, tax rate history, budget funding elements, tax budget history, budget assumptions, budget highlights, budget drafts, the general fund, debt service fund, and the last one is the fund balance and the budget calendar. These are just some of the busy budgets for 2017 and 2018. Okay, so the goals for this year's budget were: Dona ISD students for chief academic success, broad classes, other education, irrelevant, rigorous, and aligned curriculum. The second goal, Dona ISD will provide students and all stakeholders with a safe and mature school environment that supports academic success. The third goal, Dona ISD will follow sound fiscal managerial practices to provide a happy qualified staff, appropriate resources, technology, and learning capabilities to promote increased student achievement. And the fourth goal is Dona ISD will collaborate with parents, community members, and staff to promote continuous success for all students during the background planning and advisory process. Okay, the legal requirements for budgets, there are several state and local requirements that must be followed. The first thing we're in the review is the statement of Texas law 2.6.1. This law states the district budget must be prepared by date set by the state Board of Education, which is currently August 31st. It must be published ten days in a newspaper for adoption of the district budget. The summary of budget should be presented in the following function areas: A) Instruction, which is functions 11, 12, 13, 95; B) Instructural support, which are functions 21, 23, 31, 32, 33, and 36; Central administration, which is function 41; District operations, functions 34, 35, 51, 52, and 53; Debt service, which is function 71; and then we have other functions, 61, 81, 91, 92, 93, 97, and 99. Okay, the posting of budget on the district website. House School 3, 81st Register Session Additive, T E P 39.084. Upon final approval of budget by the school board, the district shall post on the district's website and copy of the adopted budget. The website must prominently display the electronic link to the adopted budget until it's been approved through the date the budget was adopted. Under transparency link on our district website, there's a link to all those approved budgets. Now they go back to 2010. Okay, T E A legal requirements. The budget must be adopted by the Board of Trustees inclusive of amendments no later than August 31st. June 30th is the district's end of July 1st as your start date. Minutes from the district board meetings will be used by T E A to record adoption of and amendments to the budget. Budgets for the general fund, the service fund, and debt service fund must be included in the official district budget, legal or fiscal year basis. So next, we have a notice of public hearing that was published in the monitor on Sunday, August 13, 2017. The notice of public reading to the proposed budget for proposed rate. Our significance on this first page, it's all one page that we have in progress since it was proposed, the maintenance tax, we're proposing 1.17 for $100. The proposed rate for maintenance operation, full debt service tax, we're proposing 2.0882 for the $1500 proposed rate to pay bond and debt interest. Comparison of proposed budget with last year's budget. In comparison with last year's budget, this year's budget is 1.94%. There was a decrease in debt service, and there was an increase in maintenance and operations. So our total expenditures increased 3.31%. On the following little box, total appraised value and total taxable value. It shows the appraised value for all property, and it compares preceding year to the current year. So if you notice, the preceding year total appraised value for all property was $1,710,881,730 compared to the current tax year of $1,937,3484. So that's a significant increase from the prior year. We do have new value to our district or to our land is the Walmart that's coming up, and then we have several other businesses that are coming up, which is increasing the appraised value of our land. Also, there's a note, MNO maintenance operations tax rate provides funds for the maintenance and operation cost of a school district. Would that include the construction administration, staff development, library resources, campus administration, maintenance, transportation, and student, anything that has to do with maintaining the operations of the school district? The INS entrance institution tax rate provides funds for payments on debt, the finances of district facilities, such as bonds and interest on the bond. Okay, notice of public hearing, Jim Jimmy. If you look at the first comparison of proposed rate for last year's rate, last year we proposed 1.17 for maintenance and operation, and this year we're proposing the same rate, 1.17. For interest and sevens, last year we proposed 0.0882, which for this year we're also proposing 0.0882. The total tax rate that we're proposing is 1.2582, and for this year, 1.2582. It also gives you the local revenue per student, which was 987 last year and 986 for fiscal year 1718. State revenue per student, 8,532, and it increased to 8,712 for 1718. On the next block-
Ms. Martinez.
Yes, sir.
So what you're proposing is there is no rate increase?
Yeah, so there's no rate, everything is remaining the same as it has in previous years. So that's the same thing that we're proposing for this year. The next block shows you the comparison of proposed levy with last year's levy on average residence. So according to the appraisal district, an average residence, the value is $44,991. As compared to last year, it was $40,710. So there was a little bit of an increase in the appraised value of an average home. Also, the third block, there's the fund balances. We had estimated the fund balance to be $46,28739, and the interest and sevens fund balance, which is $599,266, and this is proposed at the end of next year, 1718. Okay, the tax per cost for quality of schools. If you remember, on the previous page, the average taxable value of residence was $44,991. So pretty much, if you take that and multiply by the 1.2582, on an annual basis, the taxes are $566, and if you divide that by 12, that is $27 per month that our citizens, our dollar residents, pay for quality schools here in Dillon. Also, I'd like to point out at the top, from 2012 to what we're proposing 2017, 2018, the rate has remained steady throughout all those years. Again, the tax rate eight-year history shows that there's been no change. We maintain the same tax rate for eight consecutive years, 1.2582. Next, we have our budget funding elements, and also we have a-
Ms. Martinez.
Yes, sir.
Can you go back to the last page? Last page, the one that this room. Okay, just note that the, it's been the Hidal County appraisal district who's actually the appraised value of properties and not Dona ISD, so none of these increases are to blame for our local district, it's from the county appraisal district.
Yes, the appraisal district goes out and they're saying, residents, you know, they go through, they do with their own survey, and this year they, it was quite high, they doned the residents, and this has appeared on about 14% more than in prior years.
Thank you.
Okay, the budget funding elements. We're comparing about six years of history, 2012, 2013, our ADA was $13,945. And 2013, 2014, the ADA was $14,153, which was a 2% increase from 2012, 2013. Our ADA decreased to 2014, 2015, 5.04%, so $14,158 is what we ended up. 2015, 2016, our ADA went up 0.4%, to $14,215 from the prior year. And 2016, 2017, this year, went up at $14,284, which is 0.51% from the previous year. For 2017, 2018, we're, we're very extremely conservative, and we're just estimating a 0.1% increase, making it 14,000 children, 99 students. Again, in the middle, you can see our MNO tax rate and our INS tax rate have remained steady throughout those years. Our levy assessed has increased for 1213, it was $12,452,349. 2013, 2014, it increased almost 2% to $12,480. 2014, 2015, full year, it increased 10%, it went up to $14,195,490. 2015, 2016, if you don't get, we have a decrease in the value. Sometimes the appraisal district will come out and read the value, and that year, they decreased the value of the homes, the dividends in Dillon by 0.69%. So our assessed value is $14,98249. 1617, it had a slight increase to 2.72%, and in 1718, it jumped significantly to 14.23% or $16,896,116. Now, this is actual revenue that we're forecasting to receive. Of course, we have to be aggressive with our collections to ensure that we receive as much as we can. Again, the six-year tax budget history is a graph, and it indicates things that we just discussed. It's been steadily increasing, and in the midst of a big jump rate for 2017, 2018. Our budget assumptions are that ADA goes a 1%, which is $14,289 students. We're having that 14% increase in taxable property values. We're also activating the tax budget rate to be 90%. Also, at the top, again, a total tax rate of $1.2582, MNO of 1.17, and interest and sevens 0.0882, again, there's no change to that, our tax rate. Budget highlights. This is the eighth consecutive year without a tax rate increase. The district did rezone, so we have to rezone that some students need to rezone to different campuses, and that's just to make sure that all students will be, will have comparable services, they won't be able to try to one area and melt that student in the other. Our committed fund balance for capital investments and capital purchases, this was committed by our board, and committed means that their funds can only be used for specific purposes pursuant to constraints imposed by formal action of our board, our school board trustees for a specific purpose. So we decided, the board decided and management, that Todd Middle School needs some improvements, so they're authorizing a wing addition, according to AT, so we're using. Also, it's an also data fine art auditorium, use carpet to be used. We've got four, we've budgeted for four school buses, some H F units, and maintenance vehicles. We're also projecting no salary increases, and we did have reduction in staff through attrition, so salaries and benefits are still in our budget, so they're down from 80%. Okay, here's a snapshot of our general fund balance for 2017, 2018. Our local revenue forecast is $17,075,186. Our state revenue forecast is $132,380,51. Our center revenue forecast is $14,598,598. Our total forecast of revenues is $164,699,835. From there, we've also listed our appropriations. We have salaries and benefits of $130,584,321. Professional and contracted services, $11,244,99. Supplies and materials, $11,529,933. Other operating expenses, $5,776,558. Under other operating, that includes travel and any other miscellaneous expenses that don't get through into the 61, 62, 63. The 6500s are debt service, which these are our lease payments. We're projecting 3.1 million. Our capital outlay, which includes the appropriations, the commitment by the board to add the wing to Todd Middle School, and the along with that AT, and the improvements to some more potato auditorium, school buses, and H F units as well. So the capital outlay we have is $7,985,020 for total budget appropriations of $170,679,835. On the bottom, we show that there's a reduction of $6 million to the fund balance for the appropriations, so those are going to be transferred into the capital outlay. And again, you know, we have the description of what the appropriations are for. So our general fund budget balance isn't balanced in those areas.
Ms. Martinez, if I may, just so, with regard to that allocation on the designated fund, I want to be certain, obviously, because this is a public hearing that our trustees and administration, of course, the staff understands. Todd Middle School, we've been hearing in the day, unfortunately, the bond didn't pass. IFA, as we mentioned, didn't even get looked at this year. IFA is for instructional facility allotment. EDA is a whole different thing, that's an existing debt allotment of which is available. In fact, the legislation on this special session added more money into that, but of course, that, if we're to go through, has to go before constituents on vote. Nevertheless, being that we do have a good fund balance, a healthy fund balance, we looked at what we have right now, the daily operations right now have been at a 426,000 amount, 426,000, so you multiply that some 30, we looked at conservatively, and we added the $500,000 on there, so that we are looking at a district to have $45 million still in their respective fund balance that can still keep us in operation for what T E A strongly recommends. Hence, again, I certainly want to make note that Todd, going back over there, even though it's going to be one wing, we're looking at the logistics right now, possibly at 12 rooms, depending on where the area is at. 12 rooms right now is because we looked at the math, and that's about 200 students. When we talk about wing, we're also looking with the hallway space and obviously the restroom that it comes with, the entrance and exit doors and what have you, we're trying to look at the feasibility, work in it possibly best be suited to, again, assist that campus without having to go too far out. Just in dialogue and speaking, we looked at the southern part of the building. So when you're going from Salinas Boulevard towards Dona High School, that is known as Eastwood Avenue, so imagine driving south, it'll lead directly to that little parking area. And again, this is all just in conversation right now, we've got to get the details, but keep in mind, members of the audience, that this is something that we also look for in the future, that particular campus, when the next, when the next round comes around, things become available, we certainly want to go out and seek the support of the public, but at this point in time, we've got to take, take what we can do now, and I certainly recommend our trustees for going forward with it, because you saw the numbers, we see the need, we're also currently in a T STEM. Both high schools have been designated, and that has to go through an application process. By the end of this school year, we're going to also submit applications for most schools, what is known as early college, early college high school, which is a different application. So we're looking at the forethought and to, that could possibly be one of those high schools that could be earmarked for that. But in the meantime, we want to get this wing going ASAP with, obviously, good construction, with good forethought for our students. And we had talked about bringing in a possible portable restroom out there, and putting a covered, covered walkway to cover from the portable man, but if you look at the actual amount that we had, this was something that was feasible, and again, it's something within the control of what we can do as trustees. We, again, thank you for going forward with this, and as you heard the other buses, you know, buses were there all the time, and I think it's going to be very important to understand that we're looking at two regular and two special needs. Two special needs, any other individuals can use it, but like I've mentioned in the past, we're trying to be as mainstream with our students in all areas, so the more buses we have, the more advantage we'll have too. And you mentioned about the transportation equals N D H VAC, okay? So I did want to say this after, because this is something that's within our control, and our trustees are obviously in favor of this, and keep in mind, like I mentioned, the IFA, that wasn't even funded, and the EDA is still there, but that'll be something down the road, okay? Anybody have any questions on that?
I do. What should I, what should I ask now versus later in our board meeting? Does it matter?
Actually, right now, it's a workshop, I'm rather a public hearing, you can discuss anything, but when we get to, when we get to the actual meeting, BF1, that's more into numbers, the account numbers, what you're going to see here in the other bracket, but right now, you could be-
Okay. Because I was just interested in seeing, and maybe this is in our other packet, but the breakouts for each of these, what we're anticipating for Todd, the roofing, the buses, because none of that was in the proposed budget on Thursday, correct?
We had the workshop.
Right.
Correct, none of the items we just discussed right now with regard to the fund balance.
So I'm curious how much, how much we're anticipating for each one of these six things on the list? Is that the late, you know, meeting later or now?
We can talk about it now, but I know we're going to get more depth. I know that when it comes to the building with the wing, we actually don't want to, you know, we say, we don't want to go out how much we're going to earmark for that, because we want to go with the opposite, we want to say, this is what we need, these are the rooms we need, those expenditure, as opposed to saying, we have X amount of money earmarked for that, where they're going to hit us to the very top number. And we say we have 5 million, we have 6 million, they might shoot for that. So this, this amount that we have is going to be for everything else, and we're going to be very conservative, but by the same token, aggressive in getting this product moving, just like we've done in the past, you have to, you know, keep getting after it, give it its best price.
Yeah, the majority of the funding is for the wing. The other items are not as expensive. I can tell you that the police group was about $100,000, what we already made in case, $180,000. The multiple data auditorium was about $20,000, $28,000 for carpet.
Ms. Martinez, when was that brought up in the passport meeting, the fine arts auditorium carpet?
It was, it was discussed today with two of the board members.
Okay, because you mentioned it was discussed in the past, not in all.
Yes, can I interject some information here? This morning, Mr., I said this myself, along with Ms. Martinez and Superintendent Castillo got together, and you know what, in the past, we've always were criticizing the administration because we saw that there was a need at Todd, and they always kept using Todd as the needs school, but there always was, let's take and build a new school out there on the north side of town, raise bonds, you know, this kind of deal. Well, we have immediate issues there at that school, and when we saw the actual budget, I mean, the amounts of money that Ms. Martinez, and I want to commend Ms. Martinez and her staff, because, you know, back in January, February, that they came to us with a $5.4 million budget amendment, and the board took a very active position and said, you know what, we're not going to approve that, and we challenged them to tighten their belt and look for ways to adjust this, hey, we got to live within our means. Well, in doing so, you know, they were actually able to make quite a bit of adjustments there, and we found that we had a little extra money there that, you know, it wasn't as blue as, you know, it had been predicted to be, and we saw that there's some money there, and I said, well, you know, instead of, we need to address the issues of our kids, and it's always been kids first, you know, so I think that the need of the kids there at that campus is definitely there. You know, so we kicked around some numbers, and it's, we use very sound management, construction management decisions. You know, we can build a wing within our means and within the money that we have. You know, it's like, okay, we have money in our pocket to do this, why go out and borrow money when we have, and if we manage the money correctly, it's going to be, I mean, an asset to the district instead of a liability, you know, so that was one of the considerations that we discussed, and there was a little wish list of things, and this was something that we were discussing, and again, it's all subject to board approval, you know, but this is something that we thought that it's a doable deal, and eventually, like Mr. Castillo made a comment, that, you know, we're, we were, we got two of 11 slots for the T STEM in the whole state of Texas that were approved this year, okay? So Texas had 11 slots, Dona Texas, Dona ISD, Dona North, and Dona High School approved, okay? We are presently working on the early college program, trying to get that certified, you know, and it's going to be, you know, the baby steps, like what Mr. Castillo says. You know, we're starting off with 125 kids, and hopefully, at both campuses, and we're going to build up over the four years, so by the time the freshman that's coming in this year graduates, we're going to have a total of 450 to 550 kids in our early college, early college and T STEM program going. So those are things that, you know, we're looking at foresight, you know, not hindsight. In the past, it's always been hindsight, we, you know, we need a new campus, we need a new campus, let's raise a bond. Well, we're going to show our taxpayers that we give property managed the money that we have, and make sound decisions, so that's my, Ms. Spine, I don't know if I answered your question. Ms. Smith, I don't know if I answered your question?
Yes, it's very helpful. I think I, well, to the point of like, understanding how much this kind of divides out to, like HVAC units, four buses, the thing I'm thinking about is, you know, where we were on Thursday was, we were estimating we'd have to pull out 1.3 million to balance the budget from the fund balance where we were on Thursday. And then we said, let's make sure and put some money, allocate that for WA Todd, so that was on the table. But then I think if we go from there to now pulling out 6 million of the fund balance, it makes me a bit nervous because we don't have as much cushion in the fund balance, you know? And then on top of that, I also think about like, of all the ways we could spend the money, is this, it just seems like a lot to me and because there might be some other things where we really need that money. For example, with our TSTEM coming up or with our bi-literacy, simultaneous bi-literacy program, if we have this cushion in the fund balance that we can take money out, do we need to actually spend some of that money to hire more staff for the first year to make sure that our ratios of students to teachers are lower? I just think that we need to think about, you know, what can be done, even with 300,000 or a million dollars, then you start to get into all of those, what should you do? And there's a lot of things you can do. And I think, I think I go back to, what are some of the like, goals we've talked about? And I think about how much we saw in the surveys from teachers and employees through our vision and district goal setting process, how people talked about just making sure we're keeping the student teacher ratio low. And then also thinking about how much it came up around technology, like, do we have the funds to purchase all of the equipment, the technology that's needed for TSTEM for early college high school? Because that, early college high school will have to come out of this year's, no?
Early college high school, the application is due December 31st. Any and all school district will be notified by spring of '18, and then '18, '19 will be the first year.
But that's what I'm saying, we'd have to purchase in this year's budget what we would need to set up for the '18, '19 school year.
Right, and our plan right now is to merge with our TSTEM for right now until we look at, because we've got two separate high schools. To divert both of them into one would take away from each one. So this is kind of like their extension within a school for both high schools, sort of these schools within the school, as opposed to some of the districts that are having totally separate apart, then that student population would not have any ownership. So I can tell you right now, for the TSTEM, both of them have already designated the wings, both campuses have designated, actually, they've purchased some technology equipment to do it, and some of that will be utilized for the TSTEM. When it comes to the early college high school, that would be in the spring, the notification of 2018. And by then, we're also looking at from within the budgets, mostly from the federal budgets. Like right now, we're looking at possibly bringing in some assistance for TSTEM federally funded, 211, so that's not taken into account here, but not until the school year begins. We're also looking at assisting some of the THs to help out in the lower grade level, but that would come from the 211. You have a question? Yes.
I just wanted to, are your kids coming to Donna ISD?
No.
Okay. My daughter goes to Todd, she's going to go into sixth grade, and they're going to go into portables. My son went to Todd, sixth grade, they went into portables. And there's a big need for that school. So for me, as a parent, as a taxpayer, it's better for us to look at that need first because we need to get those kids in the classroom instead of going into portables.
That, to me, I think is at the top of our list. That's what we talked about on Thursday. I think I don't have any, we for sure need to allocate funds for sure for Todd. I guess what I was, what was unexpected for me was the other things on the list, because I feel like on Thursday, I was left thinking that we would allocate around a million or so for Todd to do the renovations or whatnot. And so this was just higher than what I anticipated, but that is for sure. I feel like we're on the same page that that's going to happen.
And one of the things that I may intervene here is that we started doing crunchy numbers, you know, square footage, how much do we need? We're looking at, I mean, I think it was between a 13,000 square foot building, and that would accommodate 12 classrooms and a boys and girls bathroom within that hall. We were already programming or had projected to build a new, and it was going to be like a portable bathroom out on the side, you know? And so I said, you know, that to me was a waste. And I said, you know, why don't we just incorporate that $166,000 into the building and then, you know, just add some more? And we, we're not going to create a montage, I mean, a beautiful, we're going to try to stay with a basic wing where the kids are in, air conditioned, they don't have to go out during inclement weather, you know? By the time they get to all those portable buildings up there, you know, the kids get wet when it's cold, you know, all this stuff. So we're trying to keep a new wing inside within, and we don't even have a design, but we have a vision of what it could be. And it's like, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Ivy Academy, some of those Ivy Academy buildings that they have outside, they're basic, but they're very accommodating, you know? And that's what we're looking at is, you know, we're not going to create another Donna High School, Donna North High School, you know? But we can create a nice building, and that's the vision that we have for now, you know? I mean, it's still, we, it was just in the conceptual stage, but it's going to be inside where the kids will be in air condition and heated, whether we're training and stuff like that, they're not going to have to go outside, you know? And I think that the kids here at Todd, you know, really deserve that, you know? And, you know, we have the money and according, based on, you know, and again, like I said, I want to commend Ms. Martinez because they, they were able to find money and they looked, and Mr. Galas is back here. I mean, he's been looking through accounts, subaccounts where stuff was labeled wrong and, you know, he was able to put money together to compensate for what we felt was a $5 million budget amendment that was needed to where I think we're under, what were the figures?
We had, we ended up with 64 million, I believe, and we had a $2 million.
So that was one of the reasons why we considered doing this, is when we figured that there was a $54 million fund balance, you know, we were real concerned that we were not going to be, you know, we're going to be, you know, just breaking even. And now, you know, there's still a bit of money by making these investments. And not only that, but, you know, we've been practicing attrition. There's a lot of employees that have been, have, for whatever reason, resigned, retired, quit, and we're not replacing them. And that will, you know, believe it or not, those little things are the things that have, you know, we've been practicing soft fiscal policy, you know? And I think that we're being very frugal, and this addition that we're looking at, as I said, it's going to be a nice, nice building. It's not going to be the mansion, you know? But it's going to be, it's going to get the job done, what we're hoping to envision, okay? So I mean, that's just, but again, we're looking at.
So the six, and I do have lots of nieces and nephews, a couple that are going to Todd next year, so they would be very excited to that Todd would be, you know, how about we? But of these six projects here, we're estimating then that about 5 million is for the Todd renovation, less, and then the other 1. something million is for these other five projects? Is that...
Right. And we were to do, again, unofficially, the 202,000 is very much on target for the AP so these remaining bounds, 202,000. And all this is coming from the 6 million. Then we're looking at the six pickups, possibly $35,000 each, okay? Four buses, 100,000 each, so you're talking about 400,000. And then the HVAC is something that we're going to be dealing with, because we are looking at what is really not functioning anymore without even having to do the repairs, because he's got a good plan, but we wanted to also be proactive on this. And then the remaining would be for the Todd wing. We really don't want to go out and say, we got 4 million for the Todd wing because, again, we're going to try to get it at a $4 million price.
And of course, they're committed, so it's a committed amount, we can't really spend it anywhere else if I move.
And I think basically that's what she just said right now, is we're committing those, that money for these projects, okay? Now, if it doesn't get spent, all of it gets, you know, we may not spend all of it. We may, hopefully, if we're good at where we're going to be composing, we may have money left over at the end of the day and roll it over for next year.
So, and what's the function code? These are the function codes, right, Mr. Galas?
Those are the object codes. Function code, I believe, is 81.
Okay, so that's not only, I think some of these we might need to distinguish between what comes out of plant maintenance and operations, 51, and what comes out of facilities acquisitions and construction, right? So these would be either one or the other of those two?
It would be 6600s because they're all fixed assets, so they are all under 6600, and the function should be 80, so...
Got it.
Okay, and we're also showing here graphically the forecasted revenues. 80% is coming from state revenue, 11% is coming from local revenue, 9% from federal revenue. Again, on the expenditures, we have 76% is for salaries and benefits, 62%, I mean, 7% is for professional contractors and services, 7% is offered for supplied materials. We also have 3% for other operating expenses and 2% for debt service and 5% for the capital outlay, which includes the amount that we set as value for the improvement. Our debt service fund, we decided to give you a, kind of like a little forecast of what we're expecting to happen next year with our debt service. Our total revenues that we're forecasting are $7,335,905. Local share, we're estimating $1,388,245, and state revenue, $5,947,660. This is what they call the IFA funding that we receive from the state. And then we're subtracting from the bond principal payments, $5,640,000, and then our bond interest payments, which is $2,950,794. We also have other debt spenders, because they add when they're going to a renovation, that's $117,606. So total budget appropriations is $8,708,400. Again, on here, if the revenue is less than what our expenses are, so we're going to be short $1,372,495. So that amount will come from the debt service fund balance. We have currently $8,291,550. So at the end of next year, we'll have $6,919.55. Normally, this is a transfer in from our general fund balance, operating fund balance. That's because we have such a high fund balance in this account that we're able to absorb it within the same fund. Okay, here we're showing the fund balance 13-year history. We started with 2005. So if you look back still, we have 27 days in the fund balance. What's required is 90 days by TEA. In 2006, we had 16 days available, and 2007, we had, it increased to 21 days. 2008, 22 days. 2009, we had 19 days. In 2010, it jumped up to 79 days. 2011, it increased to 106 days. I believe this is one of the years when we had staff reductions. So then it decreased to 85 days in 2012. In 2013, we had, went up to 120 days. 2014, 103 days. 2015, 100 days. 2016, 114 days. And what we're forecasting for 2017 is 106 days. This has been adjusted to reflect the board committed funds of $6 million. It was like at 120 days, I believe. So with the committed funds, it went down to 106 days, but it's still more than the 90 days of before in 2017.
After you pull those 6 million?
And then, having said that as well, I'd like to reiterate the fact that right now, our daily expenditures is 126,000, and doing what you got there, it's a 406, basically gives it 504,000 days, so I think that, I don't want to use the word cushion, but it's being conservative beyond the daily average.
Another interesting thing is that we're, I'm, what we are expecting for daily last year is 2016. So we really have an increase in this area. Okay, the overview of fund balance classifications. In the fund balance, we have several classifications. I'm going to review them so that you can see what we have right now. The non-spendable fund balance, these are items that you can't, you can't spend because it's primarily inventory items. You could sell the inventory items and generate revenue, but normally it's something that you can't spend because it's parts and supplies. So non-spendable fund balance inventory, and of course, I want to just, these are off-forecasted numbers because they're not audited yet. We're only starting our audit soon. So we're just, they're estimations from our last inventory. So we're 516,655 is what we have for non-spendable. So the restricted fund balance, these are items that are externally involved by creditors, grants, contributors, or laws, regulations, or other government, and imposed by law to constitutional provisions or enabling that execution. This includes our food service fund and our debt service fund and some federal and state grants. So our estimated general fund for child nutrition is $4,684,440. Other governmental estimated dollars are $7,348,711. So the total restricted fund balance is $12,33,150,000. Committed fund balance, this is, these are funds that can only be used for specific purposes, for students constrained to impose by formal action of our school board trustee for a specific purpose. And here we have the $6 million that was committed for the improvements and other items that we just discussed. Then we have the assigned fund balance, which right now it's zero, but the description is funds that are constrained by the district's intent to be used for specific purposes that are neither restricted or committed. It does not require formal action to declare the fund as assigned. It includes all remaining positive fund balances in the governmental fund, other than the general fund that are not classified as non-spendable, restricted, or committed. Right now, we don't have any funds in that category. The other signed fund balance, these are funds that are unstrained by the district's intent to be used for specific purposes but are neither restricted or committed. It does not require formal board action to declare the fund as assigned. Includes all remaining positive fund balances in the governmental fund, other than the general fund that are not classified as non-spendable, restricted, or committed. So are projected in $45,410,300. So are projected in forty-five million, four hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Again, this is just the total fund balance. When you take the general fund, we have the total fund balance of fifty-six million, six eleven, four seventy, and includes all the categories that were in the general fund, non-spendable, restricted, committed, and unassigned. Also, we have all other governmental funds restricted fund balance, which is seven million, three forty-eight, seven eleven, for a total governmental fund of sixty-three million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. So all combined, all the different funds are the total sixty-three million, nine hundred and sixty, one eighty-one. Okay, our budget calendars. August seventeenth, we have a fourth budget workshop where we discuss our budget. August twenty-second, which is today, this is our public hearing for the proposed budget and tax rate. And August twenty-second, which is today, we're going to adopt the official budget and the proposed tax rate. If anyone has any comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Okay, this is the end of the public hearing, and we're going to go into the.
Do we do anything for public?
I think she already asked. Was there anybody else that had any comments or questions? Feel free to step up to the mic. Okay, thank you.
Something sounds like we were breaking. Well, we look like ethical.
What's the next one?
Would you consider any of them, or they don't?
Sandy, we got a crash course in school financing this year. School finance, that's good. It's behind you. Come over here.
With benefits. Protecting about twenty percent of the.
All your savings.
That's with the benefit, that's the amount. Yeah. No, it's about right. We're clearing it up. The reading, yes, with the big, yes, with the.
It's confusing.
Don't start breaking down.
Please, please. I'm really attached with this. By the adoption of taxes, if this is a present tax rate, why is it being adopted? I know that first one, the test of the administration of taxes, but that's not me.
Is that?
Okay. Now, if I read it as it is, can I come back and say, if this is due to? Because then we were selling two different messages.
Oh, yeah, that's possible. Do you want to register for it?
Anyway, I really do that. It's not supposed to be a real program. And it's from what it was. I'm pretty sure. The average, the average. The average on one will pay. We're all more than fetching this.
All right, time is six forty, and I think we have time to look over some of the stuff that was handed to us. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let's stand again for the pledge, and most of you who are not here, we're going to urge you, but let's do the pledge in the full size.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to a republic for which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, indivisible and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the moment, excited. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, trustees, and members of the audience. No, sir, there are no changes to today's special board meeting. Item one, Mr. President and trustees, BF one on the business and finance. We have discussion and possible action on approval to adopt official budget for two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. And once again, this Sandy Martinez, Senator Martinez, will be doing the presentation we do have invited regarding this presentation.
Yeah, someone has already got official budget, starting by fund. And the binder that has the detail to each fund, and then it goes by object and function as well. It's a little bit cumbersome to go over everything, but we will review the summary. Fund is an exclusive for two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen official budget presentation summary by fund. Fund one oh one is our child nutrition program. Our estimated values are twelve million, five hundred, sixty, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. That means the budgeted revenue is twelve million, five hundred, six, twelve million, five hundred thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. So there's zero variance in that fund. Fund one sixty-two is our state private fund, and we're forecasting two million, fifty-four thousand, forty dollars to be a commitment revenue. Budgeted expenditures, two million, fifty-four thousand, forty dollars. So there's zero variance or difference in that column. Fund one sixty-four is our state compensatory program fund, and our estimated revenue is ten million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. Our budgeted revenue are ten million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars, so there's zero difference in that column. Fund one sixty-five is our state special education fund, estimated revenue is seven million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Our budgeted expenditures are eight million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. There's a difference of one million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. This fund is is a very, there's a lot of these, we have a specialty students in our district, so aside from a hundred percent of the fund one sixty-five. So aside from, um, a hundred percent of the fund one sixty-five, um, being attributed to that... The state special, to our special needs department, we also add one million two hundred and fifty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-seven for locals. Of the... We have to maintain the maintenance of efforts, so we are required to sustain, help to sustain the program. Fund one sixty-seven is our state career and technology.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is this, uh, overage due to all the additional, uh, staffing that we've been required to...
Uh, some portion of it, not very much.
Some staffing and transportation. It's...
HBI is about, about twenty, twenty, twenty-five thousand. Uh, and we've added, um, about three or four within this test here, as per the arts. So we're talking about a hundred thousand of it, it's about for additional staff. Just the increase in cost of, I mean, we have a lot of need kids. We have some kids who require special, uh, individual nurses, things like that.
Yeah, 'cause I noticed that there was quite a bit of growth within that department, uh, hiring of, you know, the shadows and hiring of all this. I guess all of those things have added quite a bit of staffing. You know, 'cause there's been a lot of... And that's the one department that I looked at, the, the number of employees, and it's like three, four times the, the number of all the other departments.
Is this, uh, something we need to... Because, I mean, we got a shortfall of over a million dollars here.
I mean, it's all not attributed to personnel, but, I mean, it, it's just the department's very costly. I, I do know that in other districts, uh, they use the same portion of their funds, but they also have to, uh, I guess provide in kind by the district. I don't know any district that does not provide their own local to supplement the special departments.
Yes, and, and it is just why, I mean, everyone has the same problem, but it's just we have to meet the needs of those children. And it's usually, it's the local.
And this is supplemental in kind from our district, I mean, from the district to, to offset the cost of the operating.
Right, and, and also, I think it's really important to, to make note that Mr. Martinez mentioned it, but I want to reiterate that out of this, uh, program, the foundation program, we, we are giving one hundred percent versus some of the others, uh, fifty-two percent, uh, fifty-five percent. And then the rest can be used for student services. But in this case, one hundred percent is going, and we still are helping.
Mr. Superintendent, is there... Is there room for work to be looked at at this department? Because again, we're looking at over a million dollars over budget, and I'm not, I'm not denying that there's a need. Of course, we want to give, give our, our children everything that's needed, but, you know, when you hit us with a million...
I can tell you what we're going to be doing, because, you know, that's, uh... What we're doing right now, we have actually began dialogue because I want to be, be able to get the foundation, get the, get the research done. And in middle schools, we have what is known as co-teaching, special ed co-teaching teachers. At the high schools, we have what is known as inclusion teachers. So we're beginning to get the data on there and see, is it really been, been effective? Okay? Because we've had it for several years, and that's one thing that I may have noted, and, and meeting with our directors, because if there's anywhere where we're going to be able to, to really, uh, look in there and see, is it cost effective, is it those two areas? The co-teaching and the inclusion teacher. And we began that data, I mean, with our team's director, sorry. And he's going to bring up that information via teams. Basically, what I'm wanting to know is the teacher of record, the teacher, inclusion teacher, and then what are the sections that he or she is going to? Because when you become an inclusion teacher, you basically don't have students on the grade book. But you are a co-teacher, it, it's pretty much the same. There, there can only be one teacher of record. So if Serena is a co, uh, she and I are co-teachers, and she's a teacher of record, how many students am I actually assisting? And, and is she really doing the whole teaching herself? This is the data that we're going to be looking at, because if that's the case, I don't need to be there as a co-teacher. She's doing it by herself. And maybe a little more cost effective to bring in a, a teaching assistant who can possibly do the true teacher assistance as opposed to two professional being... So that, that's what we're looking at, trustee, okay? Uh, and that data's going to have to be hardcore, and it's got to be at least a good, uh, four years that we looked at, four years back.
I know that, that the several of my last two years of, of teaching, I, I did have an inclusion teacher. You know, and then, uh, I, I was, I was blessed that the individual that I had was, she was a teacher of America. And, I mean, she was a, I mean, a go-getter, and, I mean, it was like, I could teach. And then I would say, you know, hey, I've, I've got to go to the restroom. And it was like, there was a really smooth transition between her. And then sometimes she, she would tell me, hey, I want to teach a little bit of this lesson, and she would teach a little bit of the lesson, and I would monitor the kids. So it was a, it was a very smooth transition. But then, I understand that not all inclusion classrooms are, are run that effectively initially.
But there's also one other aspect, uh, the special department has to deal with is, we have a large number of students, and I can't tell you the number, uh, that go to McAllen every single day. And we have transportation that provides back and forth. Um, and that's extremely costly, uh, because they had to get services in McAllen, and since they belong to us, we had to take them back and forth. So there's different things, uh, that hear about that very extensively.
Right, and given my trustees, that example of Mr. Yanova gave, that obviously, that, that is, that is long, A or D. What I referred to earlier about the co-teaching and the inclusion, that's something that we really have to research. That's what they're not doing, and we have begun that.
Okay, um, fund one sixty-seven is our state current technology fund. Estimated revenues are three million one hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. Our budget expenditures are three million one hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. So there's zero difference in that column. Um, fund one sixty-eight, our state gifted and talented. Uh, estimated revenues are two hundred forty-eight thousand four hundred nineteen dollars. Our budget expenditures are also two hundred forty-eight thousand four hundred nineteen dollars with a zero dollar difference. Fund one seventy-one...
Then, uh, real quick, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. Why is it that we're, we're placing such a small emphasis on our GT kids? And, I mean, when you, when you're looking at every other department spending over a million dollars of budget for expenditures, and then you got the GT kids that are only being budgeted two hundred forty thousand...
Uh, this amount is only the state aid amount. Um, it doesn't...
Is this based on the, the number of kids who are identified as GT? And based on that, those numbers, that's the only amount of funding we can...
Yes, sir.
The, the, okay.
Okay, um, funds...
I know that, that the GT kids sometimes, uh, for a while, I don't mistake them, I suppose, had they been, like, infected a little bit, and, you know, the funding was not... Well, I mean... I, I don't know if that was the right choice of word, just wanted to mean infected, but the funding issue would have not been addressed to the point that, you know, they had the services, the training for our teachers, and all of those things that we can probably need to address.
And there's been, where I know has been really making sure that all our teachers are getting trained.
Right.
There are thirty hours required by this thing. And then, of course, you know, at the high school, our GT students are serviced through AP and the pre-AP classes. So a lot of our money are funded into their AP by the high school offering and those different costs.
So then the, the funds are actually... We're spending more money, but it's not being, uh, uh, tagged as, as GT funds. It's being through the campus allotment. And I know that we send a lot of kids to, and the, the GT testing, at the AP testing, AP classes, and...
SI.
Tug of enrollment, all those probably that are part of the bill, right?
And, and again, just to add, that foundation, that gifted and talented does have a true definition, they have to be identified. But to be in a pre-AP and AP, you don't have to meet them. So definitely have a lot on and beyond, once again.
Uh, fund one seventy-one is our local maintenance fund. And estimated revenue there is eight million five hundred twenty-one thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars. Uh, budget expenditures are also eight million five hundred twenty-one thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars. There's zero difference in the column. Fund one eighty-two is our fine... I'm sorry, fund one eighty-one is our athletic fund. And our estimated revenue is three million five hundred thirty-five thousand two hundred sixty-two dollars. Budget expenditures are three million five hundred thirty-five thousand two hundred sixty-two dollars as well. So there's still difference in the column. Fund one eighty-two is our fine arts fund. Estimated revenues are one million three hundred ninety thousand eight hundred dollars. And budget expenditures are one million three hundred ninety thousand eight hundred dollars. There's zero difference. Fund one ninety-nine is our general fund. Estimated revenues are one hundred and fourteen million four hundred fifty-five thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars. Our budget expenditures are one hundred nineteen million two hundred thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars. There's a variance there of four million seven hundred forty-five two twenty-three. Part of that is, is due to the... Is the committed fund that we set in place? And, and then the difference of the one million two fifty-four. So it turns out to be six million dollars at the bottom in the difference column. Um, and then we have some one ninety-nine, the high school allotment. Uh, estimate revenue is one hundred, one million fifty-three thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars. And budget expenditures are one million fifty-three thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars with a zero difference in the column. The general fund, the general fund, one sixty-four million six hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars. The budget expenditures, one hundred seventy million six hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars. The six million dollars are the committed fund, um, from the, the fund balance. The debt service, um, estimated revenue, seven million three hundred thirty-five thousand nine hundred and five dollars. Our budget expenditures are eight million seven hundred eight thousand four hundred dollars for, um, shortfall of one million three hundred twenty-two thousand four ninety-five, which will hit the, the debt service fund down to the next gen. So our, our total official budget is one hundred seventy-two million thirty-five thousand seven hundred forty dollars. Budget expenditures are one seven, one hundred seventy-nine million four hundred eight thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars. With the difference of seven million three seventy-two four ninety-five, uh, coming from the fund balance. Part of this debt service fund and the remainder is general fund. And that's the summary of our, of our budget. Uh, if anyone have any question?
Um, how close were we last year between the projections of ADA and then where we ended up actually?
Our, um, student count, we were very, very close because we had, um, we estimated very little increase in the student count. We ended up at fourteen thousand two eighty-four, which, um, what we budgeted. And for this year, we did the same, we're very conservative because...
That, that was with the, the snapshot, right?
Yeah.
So we, we did a good job of, you know, did a good job of projecting.
Oh, yeah.
And then also it matched up to where we ended up actually.
We changed, um, we also, we changed students, um, based on our numbers.
Was it, we should still, didn't you at one time say that we were, like, pull that little sheet out of your pocket?
Oh, go ahead, sorry. Go ahead and begin.
Yeah, but, but we were about fourteen-nine?
Well, the, the ADA is, is different than the total enrollment. The ADA is the average daily attendance, but we peaked at fifteen thousand three hundred fifty. You were taking, now those fifteen thousand three hundred fifty, your everyday attendance was what we mentioned earlier, fourteen thousand...
So we, we were about a, a thousand over. So, I mean, we did well because we, we projected that we were going to have fourteen thousand two eighty-four, and at times, we actually...
Yeah, it, it's, um, it's on the financial statement, so that's actually the revenue that's in there, and it's projected based on ADA, and we're online.
Because we're funded every day based on the number of that snapshot, right?
Right.
That's where we're funded. And the snapshot is only for, uh, purposes of estimation.
Right.
For, for your predict. Now, we're going to get at least this amount of money.
Correct.
And we, we went a thousand over.
Yes, and so during the summer, um, we're always, Mr. Better, I'll send you a report for it so that we can see if our numbers are still online. It's really important to us.
Any other questions on BF one?
Um, one other question. So the high school allotment, I just noticed that, um, DAP doesn't get any of the high school allotment. Could you just share more of the background on why that is?
I can answer that. The high school allotment basically is a two hundred and thirty-five dollars per student that, back in the day, was maybe zero-four. The state came out as an experimental, and now it's become an actual, uh, school foundation program for everybody, and it keep two seventy-five. Both high schools get that now because they're separate apart. Zero zero one, Donna High, zero zero seven, Illinois. From there, there is a percent that is given, not only to the four middle schools respectively from, from each one of them, because they're trying to help them bring up the, the kids' high school level. Also, three D, because our high school kids will give them that.
I see that.
But they don't get a high school allotment. It goes from them other two, from the other two schools. It's shared, so they share.
Oh.
So zero zero one, zero zero seven, is Donna High. They are doing their decisions by assisting those kids. Now, DAP, the reason why they don't get them, because unfortunately, they are a, a non... They're not a true campus because they're a district alternative vacation.
It'll be like double counting students.
They belong to Donna High.
That makes sense, because if, so the student, that money kind of...
It's already with them.
It would be at one of the high schools they're originally at or something.
If I'm a student at Donna High School, I'm already, I already have my two seventy-five allotted for me, even though I go to DAP, my money travels with me, so...
I see, gotcha. Okay, that's what I was wondering.
And who, who, do we, do you control that budget, or are that budget controlled?
The high school allotment, it's, uh, the campus principals are actually the ones that actually... And they also, were, also the middle schools get a little bit of the money.
I think it's twenty-five. But I notice that somewhere that, that there was twenty-five thousand allotted for Campus A, B, and C, and D.
Yeah, the middle schools.
So the principal...
And so the principal is the one that would, would... If, if I'm at, at, uh, let's say that I'm at the veterans, and I need money, I would contact Ms. Casadis over there and say, I need money.
Well, actually, it's predetermined, it's, it's... Let me place it there, zero two eight, okay, is in ahead of time. So the middle school principal is going to do what he or she wants to do for their career.
Well, what if, what if, uh, something happens and, uh, a new program becomes available where I want to send thirty kids to go to some type of workshop? And I can take that out of that amount from the middle school?
There's actually some, a criteria that's on the TE website for high school allotment. And if it meets that criteria, definitely they can do that. Uh, I know that it's a strong supporter for the addict programs, a strong supporter for pre-AP, AP, also a strong supporter for, uh, condescension, things of nature, uh, ELL students. Any sign of direct...
Any other questions on BF one discussion? Can you make a motion, recommendation, sorry?
Mr. President, trustees, administrator recommends approve.
Mr. Recommendation to approve to adopt the official budget for 2017, 2018.
How do we adopt the budget as presented by Mr. Martinez? I second that.
Motion by Mr. Guerrero, and a second by the gentleman, in favor.
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 What do we have?
I'm going to vote in favor, but I'll just name that I'm a little nervous taking this much money out of our cushion in the fund balance. Um, and I understand that we're allocating the money. We may not necessarily spend it all. So I vote in favor with that comment.
Anybody against? The level of favor from the motion carries. BF two?
BF two, Mr. President, trustees, discussion and possible action on approval to adopt official tax rate for the 2017, 2018. And I know that we discussed this earlier. Mr. Martinez, if there is anyone that may have a question.
I just, uh, I want to go on, on the record to, I guess it's a clarification of this issue, uh, that, that the proposed tax rate is staying the same. It has been, I don't know, based on the, the, before we got, the same since twenty thirteen.
Twenty ten.
Um, twenty ten. So it has not gone up, it's been at one twenty-five, one point two five eight two for those last, uh, years. But may affect our taxpayers. And this is one of the issues that I have, uh, how I'll be put on record. put on record, and this is very important, because every year, our Hidal County Appraisal District, out of Hidal County, Edinburgh, goes out and they drive it around and they assess the values of homes. You may not have done anything to your home, but because of the surrounding area of new developments, you know, there's been a lot of new developments in the Donna area, you know, there's a lot of the economics, subdivisions that are popping up everywhere. And all of those subdivisions have kids that have to be educated. And they take a field that was previously appraised at $50,000 for a 100-acre field, and now they're making a subdivision, and now it went up from 50,000 to, you know, 2.5 million dollars, because now it's not a agricultural field, it's a development, it's a subdivision. So the value, just by doing that, you know, goes up eight to 10 times the value. And that's one of the reasons why they're assuming that Donna is a fast-growing area, and they've gone in there and they adjusted all the values. I go every year and I contest the value because I haven't done anything to my home, and yet they want to go up 40, 50, 60,000 dollars on the value. And if you don't go and contest it, they ask you that you're okay with it, you know. And people who contest it usually get some type of adjustment. So anyway, that's the reason we're doing this, and I don't know, is there any more comments?
Just make it very clear that, that the appraised value is due to the county, not the ISD.
That's, can I make the motion?
That's your motion?
Yeah, I want to make the motion that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption tax rate of $1.25, 1.2582, which is a new effective rate of 8.92% increase to the tax rate.
It's not increasing, correct?
No.
Okay, I'll second that.
Well, I mean, was that worded properly?
Yes.
That's why you gave the explanation.
Yes, sir. The way it is, Mr. Billman, is our appraised value in our city increased, so our effective tax rate decreased. So our effective rate is $1.15, but our tax rate is 1.2582. So our rate is higher than the effective rate, so that's why we have to do the motion, as Mr. Gavero said.
Okay.
We'll maintain.
We'll maintain.
We're maintaining the same tax rate that we've had for the last 10 to 12 years.
Okay, all right.
Okay, is a motion by Mr. Gavero?
Second.
Second by Mr. Robina, all in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Favor. Motion carries. BF3?
BF3, Mr. President Trustee, again, all this is having to do with everything that the just presented. Discussing possible action on budget amendments for the general operating for the month of August 2017. That was inclusive. Any questions? If there are no questions, administration recommends approval.
Yes, what we did was align the budget as we've been doing continuously, so that it can, what the budget was approved, as it was approved last year. So these are the final changes that we're making.
Again, I want to thank, again, I don't want it to go on record, because I am on record. But I want to thank Ms. Martina and Mr. Colossos as the county staff. I know that you guys have been having long nights and pulling hairs and trying to find the best possible job. And again, you know, it's like, you know, we always, you know, get, you guys don't get hammered for having the money, but you know, I think you guys have done a good job and stepped up to the plate, considering that, you know, we're short of CFO, and you guys did step up to the plate. So I do want to, there are too many guys who are doing a good job.
Thank you. Our staff has worked diligently, and without them, we're not doing this. Thank you.
I made the motion that we approve the budget amendments as presented.
I'll second it.
A motion by Mr. Gavero, and a second by Mr. Billman to approve the budget amendments. In favor?
Favor.
Favor.
Motion carries.
BF4, Mr. President Trustee, discussion and possible action on approval of certified appraisal roads for 2017. Again, if we have any questions, our committee will do.
All this is doing is just being redundant to what the county has presented.
Correct. This is a county report.
We got this directly from them.
Yes, sir.
So if there are no questions, administration recommends approval.
So, is a motion by Ms. Watts, second by Ms. Robina?
Favor.
All in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
BF5, Mr. President Trustee, discussion and possible action to purchase teacher and office supplies district-wide for the 2017-2018 school year. What you have in your packet is, in essence, the list, the item list, and you actually have three vendors who submitted the quotation. You've got Gulf Coast, Rays, and Buffalo. And at the end of it all, what is happening is that certain suppliers were much more cost-effective through one vendor and then certain from another vendor. So all these three vendors actually are going to be getting something that's going to be best, that's the value for our district. And going with Gulf is at $34,486.54. And then the Rays is at $39,638.54. And even though this other one, it falls under the threshold, Buffalo, is still included on here, so you can remember, $12,355.82.
Where's that at?
I'm sorry, it's in the packet.
This is...
The actual threshold would be... When you get to the end of the highlights, every...
With the funding source?
This is from our local. And of course, this is something that we use on a yearly basis, but if you remember that the threshold used to be under 50,000, but now because we're over...
So we shopped this around, and where we got the most...
Right, and here's, not all items came from the same vendor because they actually shopped around there.
Was that done by the purchase unit or the warehouse?
It's done by the warehouse.
Huh?
By the warehouse.
So if there are no questions, administration recommends approval.
So recommend, recommendation to approve the teacher and office supplies district-wide. Is that moved?
Okay.
Motion by Ms. Robina, a second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor.
In favor.
Will they be here top for the kids?
Well, the kids will start to 28, I think, the, can I suggest?
Yes.
For our staff to have.
Yeah, because it's a law.
Human Resources, HR1, Mr. President Trustee, discussion and possible action to approve the Texas Teacher Evaluation Support System, TTEST appraisal calendar for the 2017-2018 school year. In your packet, you do have that. This is something that we need to bring to U.S. trustees for approval, and then obviously we'll be forwarding to all the campus administration to also share with their teachers. And you have that copy in your packet, starting August 16th, August 23rd, TTEST student learning objectives, of which we are head of the game right now, all this week, principals and their administration are going over the student learning objectives with all the faculty. We did the TTEST, right, the first week when the deans and the curriculum specialists came back. So all the way, this goes all the way to May the 8th of 2018. And again, this is known as the 2017-2018 appraisal calendar under the Texas Teacher Evaluation Support System, the TTESTs.
This is something you do yearly here?
Yes, sir.
This is nothing new to the district?
No. And this is just something that needs to be approved by the board, so we can share with the faculty.
And your recommendation of this?
Recommendation is approval.
And this is required by TEA, right? Is the calendar any different than last year?
I believe there's a wiggle room in the front.
Okay, so no big changes?
No, no. If the student learning objective is one, it's a difference, because this year it's mandated. In case you get calls, our district, we participated in the pilot program of the TTEST, TTEST. And so as a district, we were afforded the opportunity to waive the student learning objective from being used as a criteria for evaluation for our teachers this year. They have to implement it, but it's not going to be used in their actual appraisal. Unlike other school districts that they're not allowed to go under the pilot program, they unfortunately do not have the opportunity to waive, so it will count for the teachers this year for them. That's basically the big difference that we have.
So as required by state, really, there's only mandated at least one walkthrough per year for a teacher, is that right?
Right.
All right.
Administration recommends approval?
Recommendation to approve the TTEST appraisal.
I move we approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Ms. Raina, a second by Ms. Robina, all in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President Trustees, HR2, discussion and possible action to approve the Texas Teacher Evaluation Support System, TTEST appraisal list for the 2017-2018 school year. This was a copy that was handed to you, and I know we will probably bring in another of this to you in the September Republican Board meeting. Nevertheless, these are individuals who have officially already gone and gotten their certification for this year to be an appraiser for their respective campuses. So you have that listed with you. And like I said, not everybody's there, there's still a few more that are going to be coming in, but we still have time. If there are no questions, administration recommends approval.
The recommendation to approve of this, so, motion by Mr. Gavero, a second by Ms. Watts, all in favor?
Favor.
In favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And we're going to go into executive session, time is 7:15, as authorized by Texas General Code sections 551, dot 071, dot 072, dot 073, dot 074, dot 075, dot 076, dot 02, dot 03, dot 04. Time is 7:15.
I say, thank you guys for remaining quiet. You did a good job.
Did you see, did you see Loy on the sky, and I was like...
Come back. Okay, time is 8:11, we're back, open session.
Mr. President and Trustees, open session. Letter A, discussion and possible action to approve superintendent recommendation of personnel. Administration recommends approval and discuss in executive session.
I salute.
This is a motion by, by Mr. Billman.
Mr. Billman, the tie.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Raina, all in favor?
Favor.
Please.
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Letter B, Mr. President Trustee, discussion and possible action to approve district personnel. Administration recommends a discussion and executive session.
I salute. Second.
Motion by Mr. Billman, a second by Mr. Robina, all in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Letter C, Mr. President Trustee, discussion and possible action regarding the recommendation to propose termination of the term contract of the Battle S. the Ous for good cause. Administration recommends approval for this item.
I salute.
This is a recommendation to terminate the term contract of the Battle S. the Ous.
To propose the termination.
To propose termination, sorry, propose the termination.
I salute.
The motion by Mr. Billman?
Second.
Second by Ms. Raina, all in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed?
All in favor.
Motion carries. Letter D?
Mr. President Trustees, letter D, discussion and possible action to approve pending or condescension of litigation, settlement matters, and/or matters where the professional community under state board requires private consultation with his school attorney, general counsel.
No, I mean, I should say.
No, actually.
Okay, need a motion to adjourn? Motion by Ms. Watts, a second by Mr. Gavero, all in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Do you want to adjourn?